Ms. Lorena, so Roseau, she's our PE teacher, she's waving to you. Um, we also have Shanann Ribetti, 4th grade teacher, say hi Shanann. And then we've got Jamie Plemer, Mrs. Plemer, 5th grade teacher. Amy Tuning, sweet Amy Tuning, she's 2nd grade. We have Abby Edmiston, she's here. I can't see her right now, but that's okay, because some of our staff is at home at the moment. So they may be trying to, so you can just wave, Abby, there you go sweetheart. And we have Betty Jo, she's with literacy, so Betty Jo, say hi. We have Cindy Burnson, she's a 1st grade teacher. Becky in Gasser, she's a 5th grade teacher as well. And then we have Mrs. Paulus, Dara Lee Paulus, our kindergarten extraordinaire teacher. We also have Danan Davidson, Danan, say hi, there we go. Hi, Danan. Um, and then we have Courtney Wise, our school counselor. And Jennifer Sanders is here, I believe, I covered all of our staff that's here today, I hope. So if I missed anybody, you can send Catherine a message and she'll prompt me to that. We do have a couple of features that are turned off for right now. You'll notice that you are all muted. Um, sometimes it can be very distracting if somebody accidentally goes off mute. So, um, if you are needing to ask a question, your question will go into the chat box directly to Catherine, who is monitoring our chat box for questions that you all may have. And then if you want to ask a question, you can also raise your hand or say, hey, I want to ask a question in person. And then Catherine will unmute you and give you the ability to ask your question verbally if you need to. So there's a couple of ways that you can do those questions. Again, for those of you who just joined, your question you can put into the chat box directly. That will get sent directly to Catherine, she'll be monitoring the questions. She'll read the questions for me. Because we have, for some reason, I can't see them in the chat box, so she's going to have to read them to me. Um, and then she'll also answer as much as she can as well. And then if it's directed towards a teacher that can maybe answer the question, then we'll call upon that teacher, have them unmute and answer the question as well, okay? So we're going to see how that goes. We are, if it's okay, we are recording this town hall. So if anybody is not okay with us recording, um, you may just want to ask us questions or you can watch the recording afterwards. So I just want to be full disclosure that we are recording so that for those families who weren't able to join us tonight, they can join us later. So, but we want to welcome everybody. I do see a CSU sweatshirt, Emily Horner, go Rams! My daughter's going there next year, so that is something good. She's got a scholarship to go there on swimming, so I love seeing that. I just had to point that out, that's my something good today is I get to see that CSU sweatshirt tonight. Um, alright, we're going to go ahead and get started. Let me just, um, share my screen with you real quick so we can get rolling. Oh, and we have Mrs. Reed coming in, another 1st grade teacher. Alright, here we go. So, just want to welcome you guys again. This is sort of the purpose and agenda that you can see what we're going to go through. My team is going to help me to stick to the program so that you guys have lots of time to ask questions. Um, I can get a good little pinch or Catherine can say, hey, can we got to wrap it up? Wrap it up, because sometimes I get so excited and get into discussion mode that I really want to make sure we have enough time for you all to do a Q and A and ask all those awesome questions. But I will tell you, a lot of the things that I have in the slides coming up may already answer your question. But you may just need us to elaborate a little bit on that afterwards. Um, but we are going to talk about our accomplishments, because why not start out with, my gosh, I can, I don't know about you guys, but are we starting to get a little PTSD from one year ago? Getting to that moment of when we were quarantined and I just, I, it's kind of bittersweet to be able to look at all of the accomplishments we've done and the work that we've done in one year from the time that we were quarantined. And not only the school and what we've done, but what each of you as family members have done. You guys have taken on a role that, um, I'll tell you what, we truly could not have done this without our parents and the amazing accomplishments that you guys have done at home. And so, um, sort of just my time to tell you thank you and to affirm you all in a job well done this last year. And we're also going to go over what we know or can control for the 21-22 school year. And then what we still don't know or cannot control for this next upcoming school year. And then have some Q and A time. So, once again, I just want to welcome everybody if you did just join and I want to thank you and affirm each and every one of you. I have staff in this town hall, I have our administrators, I have office staff, and I have our amazing families and students who really stepped up and did an amazing job in ensuring our mission was completed, our vision and our motto. And once again, I think I've said this many times before, but our motto couldn't be more true is that life is about New Summits. It's about those ups and downs and we've had an amazing team to be able to pull this together this last year. So, I'd always love to start out with this just as a reminder that really our biggest part of our mission was to build that safe education community. In the time of a pandemic, we would have never thought how important that part of our mission was. Also, still trying to do the very best job we could with the resources that we had, the time, the training and everything, even for our own families, for our kids to love learning. Where we very much recognized that there were some heartfelt tears among every stakeholder in our community this past year and the struggles of that love of learning and what that did for our kids. But we still want to inspire kids to empower them to see that even through a pandemic, um, our school really sort of stepped up and we have some very resilient families, kids and staff members who have just done a phenomenal job. We also, one of the things you can count on is not only our vision, mission, our school motto, but I think I've talked to you guys about this before, is about our "we believe" statements. Our founding board back in 2016 created these "we believe" statements. And these are a great reminder, so if you're wondering, what is the school about? Are we really kind of sticking to these things? This is part of what we believe and what we want to continue to do as a part of our school. And obviously, the first and foremost, most important was that parents are the primarily responsible for the child's education. And that public schools are responsible to give you viable choices for parents to choose, because we're big believers in parent choice and how that endeavor looks with schools. So just as a reminder, and you guys couldn't have had that more true this year with having to be the primary educators for your kids. Um, but we hope that we gave you good viable choices and we hope moving into the 21-22 school year, we're giving you some more. So, look at this amazing list of accomplishments so far, I say, because we've got lots of more accomplishments that we know we can get through the rest of this year. We were, I wanted to start out with one of the best, because this has everything to do with school culture and who we are as a school. And we were nominated for a second year in a role for a national showcase school for capturing kids' hearts. So, I know, um, this doesn't happen unless we're doing what is expected in terms of the requirements for capturing kids' hearts and making sure that we're doing that. Um, we did, I must say, as bumpy as it might have seemed, at some times, we had a successful reopening in the fall with in-person learning for all grades. Uh, I want to remind you, we all know, there's multiple schools throughout our country right now that still have not had kids in person fully. And so, we are extremely blessed to be able to have opened up in the fall and with all grade levels. We know, um, even my daughter's high school and their middle school. And the middle schools are finally all going back to in-person every day, even within our district, but our middle school has been in without quarantines, we know, um, every day, because the intent is definitely for our students to be here every day. So we've had to do a lot of nimble adaptations throughout this school year. And you all, as parents, have had to be a major factor in that as well and being nimble and adjusting on the fly. But as much as I can say, I believe that because we opened in the fall, that is a successful reopening, because we are officially there. It does infuriate me sometimes when I hear some schools in other states and other states that are still closed and not allowing their kids to be in school, because we've done such a successful job here at New Summit. Um, not a single positive COVID case from being in school to date, knock on wood, right? Um, we have had a few individuals that have tested positive, but it was from a interaction, not within our school. Um, and so, I believe that was from our hand washing. We've installed all these amazing hand washing stations, social distancing that we've done, and extra care with cleaning and our electrostatic cleaning that we've been doing. And then, as hard as it is, I know for each of our families and our staff, um, me personally, every time I have to write the letter to quarantine someone, um, we are following those guidelines for illnesses and quarantines. And I believe that that has kept us from dodging the bullet on those big outbreaks within our schools. So, um, hats off to all of our health and safety team and staff and parents who are following those guidelines. Our mental and social emotional supports have been paramount. Um, Courtney Wise and her team has done a phenomenal job on our SEL, um, our social emotional learning instruction that happens daily in our classrooms with mindful breathing techniques that they've been teaching kids, the small groups that they've been enduring. And I'll tell you what, our school counselor cannot wait to get some more support this next year. But she, she is doing a phenomenal job ensuring that our school's social and mental needs are being met. As a part of our focus of the whole child, that we definitely knew going into this year, we needed to ensure that our kids' needs were being met physically, socially and emotionally first in order for the academics to come. We also, I have to tell you, our academic recovery plan that we put into place like this last fall has paid off. Um, we got our winter scores and you can be assured that every single grade level in every, excuse me, K5 met grade level norms, projected growth targets in all subjects. This blew me away and I have to say, a few tears were shed with knowing that looking from our fall to winter scores with NWEA, every single grade level in every subject met their grade level norms, projected growth. And this comes with a lot of blood, sweat and tears on our parent's side and our teacher's side. So it took that partnership of working together to make that happen. Um, we also, our middle school made targets in math and reading in 7th grade and then 6th and 8th grade met some targets. And there was just a few things that they still needed to do, they didn't meet it completely, but they were very, very close. So, um, I'll be doing a presentation to our board on the 17th with our dashboard and what that looks like and how our school's doing in terms of meeting our recovery plan goals. So, that one's a big deal, guys. Um, it took a lot of goal setting and we really dug into skill level grouping, was a huge focus that we've done observations with staff, our instructional coaches dug in. Um, and we've been really looking at how we can help meet the needs of these kids in closing the gap that they may have had from some of the unfinished learning that they had from quarantines and, and this last spring. Uh, but this is a big deal. We really, I mean, guys, to have that happen in one semester, I, it blew my, it blew my mind. So, hats off to all of our staff, this is probably, some of you are hearing this for the first time, so job well done. Um, fundraising, we have needed fundraising for needed school budget priorities and we've done a phenomenal job as a school, almost surpassing our last year in-person fundraising goals. And we are about there. And so, as a plug for tonight, if you want some yummy dinner and don't want to cook, Panda Express, if you order online, we also get some funding, we get 28% back actually for that. Um, in-school events, we were still able to do some kind of in-school events with school spirit days, House of Yeti activities, science fair. I know Michelle Comfort's crossing her fingers for not a lot of snow on Friday, so she can still do that. Um, curriculum days, class fun events, kindness spark the heart month. I don't remember last month, we, we had a lot of really big kindness things going around our school last month. So, COVID requirements that fit our school community. So as you notice, um, from other schools, I know district schools right now have been, they had a mask requirement for all students, we were still just 10 and up. Based on the mandate, all of our students in the grade levels were participating in lunch together. They didn't have to have lunch in their classrooms, recess together. They didn't have to have recess in different parts of the recess area to stay in their cohorts there. We just knew how important kids needed to be together with that and trying to keep things as normal as possible. Same with specials, our kids still had their specials. Um, I know many schools, um, my best friend who's in Boulder, one of her kids hasn't really had much specials, they've had to do everything in the classrooms and that's been difficult. Um, and then added health staff, we needed a lot of added health staff this year. And then, boy, volunteer support, I tell you what, everyone, give yourselves a big round of applause, because everyone received their required volunteer hours this year. Probably because you were more involved than you ever wanted to be in your kid's education, right? So we want to just thank you all for completing your volunteer hours, because you earned them. Um, we should have you earning them for the years to come, right? But I have to tell you that this is why our recovery plan worked and why we're seeing growth and why we're seeing, um, the partnership between our not having any COVID cases come out here and just the patience that's been around. So, nice jobs and there's so much more to come, but I didn't want to go on and on about all of our accomplishments, because this is just exciting news. Because you're here to find out what's kind of changing or not changing. Um, so what do we know? What can we control? We can control that we are committed to keeping in-person learning and that will continue for all grades. Unless there is a mandate that enforces us all to shut down again. I imagine that's not going to happen, because as you hear from all over the news and everywhere, people, this is a priority for everyone. Been a priority for us the whole time, but there were forces that wouldn't allow that at certain times. So, this is a priority and your kids will be here. We do not, we will not be able to offer full-time e-learning options for the next academic year. This is because the state is, because the, they've said that schools are safe and we have people getting vaccinated and it's been successful with our in-person learning. Um, we're not an e-learning school, we're not an online school here at New Summit and we never wanted to be an online school. Um, and the state is requiring, if any school wants to still provide a full-time e-learning option, they actually have to do a whole full application to the state that has to be approved by the State Board of Education and then has to be approved by that, has to go through the district. There's a lot of work that goes along with that. But since that wasn't a priority for New Summit, um, our priority is to keep you safe while you're in school and keep kids here. Um, we will not have the full time. Now, we will have to still provide remote learning for any quarantines that we have or if your own student is quarantined due to a positive case at home or an exposure that was outside of school. We will still continue that with Google Classroom with new enhancements. I have to say, if any of the staff members who decided to join tonight, you're going to hear right now, there is some amazing enhancements that have just been rolled out with Google Classroom. And you can do breakout rooms now, we have even some more tools that the kids will see, the parents will even start to notice. Um, but I'm going to be training our staff on that, but I did just get the enterprise part of that. I was able to use some funds to be able to have access to all these new enhancements and tools that Google has just rolled out in the last two weeks, actually. So, we'll have a lot more information on that. But we also have access now to live instruction with our Polycom studios, those have all been set up. There's just a couple tweaks that we have to make with it. So what that means is when your kid's at home and maybe they're sick for two weeks and they have to stay quarantined, they're going to be able to have access into the classroom for any whole group instruction, small group instruction that needs to happen with the teacher. They're going to be able to have access to that directly through Google Hangouts, like what you've already been used to. But it'll look much more live and interactive than just looking at a camera, like what you see right here. Um, it's very, we'll have to show you guys some other time, I'll do a video with that. But it's pretty cool, so you would get some more access to that. But it'll be very, um, it'll be varied according to what the teacher is teaching that day and your students would be invited to that and being able to participate in any of the whole group instruction that occurs. Um, so teachers still need to learn how to use that. So we've got some training, but they did finally come in and we got them all set up. So we've got some training with new Google Classroom things and the Polycom. And then offering five specials next year. So, instead of a TA teaching a special, we will be bringing back either Spanish or a different special, to be determined. So, we're, we're kind of playing with a couple ideas. Um, and I'm very, very excited about an innovative idea that a teacher has brought us. And so we've got to come up with some plans with that, but I'll give you a hint, it has to do with science. So, very, very exciting. Um, we would love to be able to bring both, um, but that will all depend on funding at the state level and how much funding we get and where, where we're at with that. So, um, know that there are some things that we don't have fully finalized, because budgets won't be finalized until the end of May, or sorry, end of June. Um, everything's kind of delayed again this year because of COVID. And then, continued efforts with our goals and recovering plan that we set in the fall, these are things that you know, since it worked, we're going to keep on rolling with it. So, academic summary, we will still have all the same things that you've been used to that keep New Summit alive. Um, so nothing's really changing with this, we're still core knowledge. We still will have Singapore math with dimensions, skill level grouping, we've gotten even better at this year, I'm super excited about that. Gifted and talented, we're still very much focused on literacy first. Um, and so all of these, our academic summary will still, nothing's changed there. So, what, some more in operations now. Um, I will, I'm proud to announce that we have, so far, we have an 87% student retention. This blew me away. I'm super excited about that, because the more consistent you are in the same school with the same curriculum and the less transition, the more consistent your students' academic success will be. And so this means a lot to me as a principal and as a, as a leader to be able to see that 87% of our kids are coming back and excited to come back, because they're going to be able to continue to be a part of such a great, great school. Also, 94% of our staff didn't give up on me. Didn't give up on any given, so we have 94% of our staff, I think it's about 95% that are coming back this next year, which means consistency for your kids as well. And consistency for us and not having to spend more money in turnover. So these are all really good news. Similar health and safety protocols until informed otherwise. Right now, um, we did send out in our last newsletter, the information about health and safety and why we have certain protocols the way we do and why we do the guidelines the way we do. But I want to let you know, as soon as we get, we do weekly calls with the health department, our nurses on weekly calls, I'm on the statewide superintendent calls with the state um, every other week and we're getting updates on what's happening with all those protocols. So, everything's similar right now until we know differently. And so I don't have any other information in terms of that and what adjustments they've been making. And I do know at the federal level, CDC's been making some adjustments that then will trickle down to the states and to our local health departments. So, be on, be on the lookout for that, we'll give you updates as those come in. Um, many staff members are already vaccinated, uh, super exciting. We, in fact, we had a bunch out today, because they had their second shot and, um, the second shot has gotten some people sick. So, we had about five people out today in the office staff. So we were all kind of scrambling to do duty. So a lot of you saw Jen and I upstairs and you're like, whoa, you guys are up here, this is so great. We're like, well, here we are. Um, we did have, um, another area is that the school calendar has been posted to our website, so you can be assured on when the start and end date, when our vacations are. We did have some questions regarding the early release. Um, we still will be doing, but not every week, but we are going to be doing two early release Wednesdays a month um, with continued breaks and the times would be the same. Again, the reason for this, as a reminder, we did this so that our staff had more time to plan, had more time to do their PLC time together. Because we know the, the uphill battle we have with getting kids that gap closed for academics takes a lot more professional development, takes time to meet with the other staff members to go over data and the progress monitoring that occurs. And the staff has, it's difficult to do that when the kids are just at specials or when you're trying to take your lunch and then eat lunch and do a PLC at the same time. Our staff still has a lot of different planning to do, so when people are quarantined, they have to put things online. Um, and then the state has some additional requirements that they've put on our teachers with red act training that they have to have completed by, um, the end of the summer. There is some legislation that's trying to extend that, but there's a lot of things that come into play with why we need those additional hours in order for our staff. So we are just going to be doing those two, um, a month at this point. Um, our board was very passionate about ensuring that our staff had that additional time. Um, breakfast and lunch, um, access being free until notified differently. So I'm crossing my fingers that breakfast and lunch will be free again this next year. And then, we're going to possibly have some onsite cooking and installation of a combi oven this summer, so kids will even get more hot lunches, we can maybe get some, uh, French toast sticks and stuff like that for breakfast and all. Can't wait for the sticky hands, I bet the teachers can't either in the morning. Um, homeschool program continuation for 1st through 6th grade, possible addition of kindergarten 7th and 8th, I'll be presenting that to the board um, in the April board meeting. Um, House of Yetis with some enhancement for more participation. We have some great ideas of things that we're going to be doing with the House of Yetis this next year as we're able to open up more and have more house meetings. Um, capturing kids' hearts will stay the same, social emotional learning, additional state funding. Um, we are hearing that there's going to be some additional state funding. However, um, it's still in a lot of negotiation and, um, the state and federal level are trying to finalize that. As you all have heard in the, in the news, there's a $1.9 trillion stimulus package that's trying to get approved. I've heard one way or the other, how much money is coming to schools and how long we have to spend it. So, um, if you're hearing that there's all this more funding, we really don't see that until much later. So, um, we even got some additional, they're called SRT2 funds. We have this year and next year to spend that, and we got about additional $80,000 for that. But it's very specific on what you can spend it on and you have to apply to the state for it. So there's some processes with that. But I am glad to see that, um, most of the package does have additional funding, um, that's on the monthly funding that we would get in our state PPR. Uh, so more on that, I'm watching that like a hawk myself, because I'm trying to get budget done. Um, uh, middle school adjustments to offerings, schedule and operation enhancements. Uh, they did just present a few changes to me, we're going to be, the block schedule will look different next year, it'll be like a regular block schedule, they've proposed some of that. Um, they've been doing such a phenomenal job on those Wednesdays when we don't have, um, when that middle school's still in and they're doing small group to help close the gap for kids. I'll tell you what, middle school grew a lot because of doing that. Um, but there is no big changes, we're still going to have LEAD worthy, we're still going to have all the same courses that, um, we offered this year. Um, but they're taking the best parts, they're here to stay and we've learned a few things, um, this last year. And we may be trying to even offer some varied elective courses that may look a little bit different, since we're going to do a, a different block schedule. So it'll allow for some more courses. So, be on the lookout for that, because we'll send an announcement to our middle, to who would be affected by, by that. But, um, I will tell you, the best parts are here to stay and there's some really cool enhancements that we're doing, um, for middle school. Um, Carpool and Curb Smart will continue. So, we've really loved Curb Smart, because, um, it gets kids out. We've been, I, I think we've gotten it down to like 20 minutes or something like that now, Jen. Um, big deal, big, huge, big deal. We even in our, in, uh, in our snow, when it snowed the other day, it was like kids got to stay in the building and they just went outside, so it was, it was great. Um, we didn't have to have you guys all park and come in for an indoor release. Um, we will be reevaluating our communication tool with Flyer. We're looking into some different programs like Class Dojo. Um, I got a, I got a ad for a different one. So we're going to be looking at that and seeing, do we want to continue with it? Because parents are used to it, or is it something that we, um, look at a different communication tool? Kind of scares me, because then I got to get everybody signed up with a new tool, but, um, hopefully it would just be very seamless and we could get it rolling. Alright, so what do we not know? What can we not control? Well, believe it or not, I can't control the COVID guidelines and recommendations from CDE, local and state health departments. Even Carter Department of Ed, they, they will all work together and then they tell us, here's the recommendations. It's pretty interesting, a lot of times we, we hear a lot of, um, I will tell you, very colorful, um, feedback that comes to a lot of these meetings, um, that I'm on, where they're like, thanks for setting all these requirements, but you're not in the operations of a school to see how hard this is. And so they're hearing us say the same things I'm hearing from parents in terms of, it's so frustrating that we've quarantined again when a kid's just sniffling or when this is happening. it's so frustrating that we've quarantined again when a kid's just sniffling or when this is happening. But again, I have to say, I'm very proud that we haven't had any outbreaks here at New Summit. And as much as I may agree or disagree with some of the guidelines, I can't control that. Um, you are welcome to give your feedback as parents, talk to your legislators. Uh, we even, um, the E A C group, um, that you've seen come through our flyer message, what you can sign up for. And I know I'll have Catherine put in the message, the link in the chat box on how to become, how to join that advocate, be an advocate of the Education Alliance of Colorado. We did a collective letter to the department and to our legislators and our health department on things that we appreciate, things that we don't appreciate in some of the areas that we feel they need to fix. And so we're still trying to get our voice out in that as well, but your voice matters as well. And you can get those updates directly if you sign up through on the link that we've promoted to you all before. And I'll make sure Catherine gets that into the chat box. So you guys can sign up for that. Um, but we can't control getting back to the good old school events and normal practices. This will adjust what we can offer. So because of these guidelines that we still don't know about, because it's similar what you experience now, it's hard for us to make plans with, what are we, we already have people going, please, can we have the school carnivals back? I don't know. We gotta wait to see what the requirements are and what can we do as a community for that? Sports and clubs, um, school shows, recitals, book fairs, all these things that are so imperative to the normal practices of a school. We are fighting to get those back. Um, but we still have to wait to find out what's going to happen with those COVID guidelines and, and requirements. So stay tuned. We will bring them back as soon as we're able to in a very safe and effective manner. Getting creative, COVID, we're, New Summit's very creative with getting creative with that. So. Um, enrollment, I will tell you, enrollment, we already have people who are saying, why haven't I gotten my acceptance letter for new families that have come in? Well, because eighty-seven percent of our staff or students want to stay. So we are starting to really close that loophole and not loophole, but close that gap in some of our enrollment, some of our grade levels will be tapped out, kindergarten, first grade, second grade. Um, these are grade levels that are always, don't normally have a lot of space in it. And right now, in some cases, some grade levels only have like five spots. So we're starting to, enrollment is one thing we can't control. So I encourage you to stick it out. Um, and because we have to give up those seats if we haven't heard back from somebody because we have, um, we're starting to gather a pretty lengthy, um, uh, waitlist. So, and we want to get everybody in, but um, we need to just enrollment is one of those things we can't control. State assessments and accreditation. I know Jen has been working hard with her team on the administration of our state assessments. But once she does all this work and she's put all these man hours in, we know now there's a legislation that's just been dropped on whether or not we're going to even have C M A S or not, and what does C M A S look like? Um, which does affect our accreditation. So all these things we can't control. So I'm like, Jen, just keep planning. Hey, you're going to have this great plan put together. Even if we couldn't, and they then dropped it on us, um, like last minute. So, um, it's, it's kind of nerve wracking. I'm not going to lie that you put all this work into something and then it may not happen. But, um, that's why we, we plan. So, um, high school plan. I don't have control over the high school plan because I can't control enrollment. I can't control state funding. And as some of you had seen, high school takes a lot of, um, takes a significant amount of enrollment in order to sustain a high school model. And then what that high school model will look like. I want to make sure that we have the right funding so that we're being, I'm being a good fiscal agent of our money in order to ensure that we can have a well put together high school. But I'm telling you, I've already have some ideas. We've got some things that we're starting to think about. And I do want to start that high school committee again so that we can continue to plan and what that, um, when we could be able to do that. So, um, just know that that is in still, it's not a, it's not no, never. It's just no, not right now. We just can't do anything right now. Uh, school funding, I can't control that. God, I wish I could because that would be really awesome if I could. And I really wish that they could just give us an answer so then we can really start planning. But, um, we've been told that the J B C and all of the different committees are starting to look at the budgets. Um, they do have to have them finalized by May. So we may not even have our final number to continue planning until close to the end of April, beginning of May. So pretty frustrating for me as a leader to not be able to have those final numbers to tell our staff and families what we're going to be able to do. Wow, I got through it, guys. How did I do on that? I got through it pretty quick. So we have some time for you guys to ask some questions. So what we're going to do now is we are going to have you just type your questions into the Q and A box. Um, and Catherine will read them off to me. And she's already got some. So let's go. Catherine, what is the first question?
So we have multiple parents asking, this year students had two to three core classes for per quarter for middle school. Will this continue or will the, um, or will we be going back to?
So in a block schedule, when it's a regular, it's an A, B day. And so they'll have every subject, you know, it'll be either every other day, but it won't be every quarter. So that is one of the great enhancements that we'll be able to do with the block schedule is that students will have in a week, they will have math, they will have E L A, they will have science, they will have history. So they'll have their core classes every week, but they just won't have it every day. So they'll have it like an A day or a B day, depending on what their schedule looks like.
Will the two early releases be just for elementary or will middle school be included as well?
Great question. So, um, will the early releases be for every grade level or just elementary? It's actually all grade levels. So we're going to keep that for kindergarten through eighth grade this next year. So middle school will be able to have an extra day for some of the work that they need to do as well.
Uh, Amy Tuning asks, could we use Google for family communication tools since most families know how to use it?
Great idea, Amy Tuning. So that is actually one of the things I was thinking of is, um, doing away with one. And then we could have like a school site that everybody just goes to, um, that we could send an email to. The issue is, I just need to find out if the new enhancements with Google will allow us to put out a full like school communication with email. When, um, because sometimes if you have a certain number of emails that you've sent out, it goes to spam because it thinks that you're spam. Where a lot of these, um, like, can you hear me now? Somebody's, I'm on, I'm on the right one. Um, so the, a lot of these apps will allow you to do it in a full bulk manner versus in email. And I think Google Classroom, we would have to depend on people just logging on to that every day versus us pushing something out. So, um, we'll have to look into sort of the tools that Google has with that. But that's a great idea, Amy Tuning. Thank you.
Foreign language is extremely important, important to us. Are you saying there might not be Spanish?
There may not, um, but we're trying to make a decision on whether or not, how we would incorporate that. If, um, we may have to survey families to see how many, what's the percentage of foreign language that would be important to them? Or if it's a different type of special that we could incorporate different areas of that? Or how could we still put Spanish maybe into the classrooms, doing it asynchronously? So there's some other creative ways that we can still provide foreign language. Um, but we also know that there's some major gaps that we have from COVID that we want to ensure that we are still providing kids the support that they need in various subject areas. So we have some, we have some innovative ideas that we want to roll with that. Because we also know, as important as I know, foreign languages for our kids. We also know that there's a considerable amount of content that is still needing to be taught in all subject areas, including social studies and science. And so these are some areas that we may need to be adjusting and that we can find some time for enhancements with that as well.
Um, homework has been a concern for me. Um, the load that was presented to parents, it doesn't wind up with a curriculum. We intentionally put this school, the homework policy.
I'll re, I'll re-say these. So this one, this question that Catherine has is in regards to homework. And that the load for homework is not what's been consistent with what we have communicated. So this is where I put this back on the parent. It's really important that if you are doing more time than what is, um, what has been communicated. If your student is doing in-person learning, you must communicate with your student's teacher first and foremost. Uh, we have mentioned to every single one of our staff members that this is still, just because of COVID, doesn't mean that we keep piling on more work. You must, um, teachers still need to stick with that ten minute per grade level. And if your student is doing more than that, you've got to email the teacher and you've got to tell them this is too hard because that is a great communication tool between you and the teacher to say something's not right and they need to adjust that. So it's really important that you partner with your teacher and finding the best solution for that. But the expectation is still what we've communicated. I will say, um, maybe some, in some cases, our staff has been, you know, they're, they've got a lot of, um, the weight of the world on their shoulders with ensuring that our kids academic, um, academics are, their needs are being met. And so they may be trying to push through some things also because they're feeling that anxiety. So we just need that communication and we're always more than willing to come up with some solutions with that.
Um, Kim, I'm going to unmute because they were.
Saying they can't hear me with the question.
Okay.
With the new middle school block schedule, what is the homework time expectation average per night?
What is the homework time expectation average?
Homework expectation for middle school, what, do I have any middle school teachers on here? I can't tell. Do we have anybody in middle school?
I guess with, with, what they're saying is with the new schedule.
Oh, the new schedule. Okay. With the new schedule, what the homework expectation would be? I will tell you, it's a little bit easier because, um, let's say they have math on a Monday. They won't have math on a Tuesday. So they'll actually have two nights to make up that math assignment. Because then they'll turn it in on Wednesday. So they actually get some additional time. Um, and they'll still have four or five classes in a day like they do now. But they're going to have an A day and a B day. My daughter's been in a block schedule. And, um, she'll, you know, obviously she'll do a little bit on one night of one subject and a little bit on another night. Because she knows that she's going to be back in that class on the opposite day. So, um, it should be the same of what you're seeing now. Um, it shouldn't be any different with that is what I'm trying to say. Because they're not going to have that same eight classes every day that they would have to be doing work for. And that is the nice thing about the block schedules. It does sort of split that up for the kids.
Is Spanish only a maybe for grade school or only a maybe for middle school as well?
So that would be for only grades, um, grades K through five. Middle school would still have the required class of Spanish and world cultures with that. Okay. So Catherine is still scrolling through our questions.
If we feel the need to repeat kindergarten after, oh, they can't hear me. Hold on. There we go. If we feel the need to repeat kindergarten after e-learning, Kinder, when, when do we request, I'm sorry, I can't request to the school since kindergarten fills so quickly.
So, um, one of the things about retention is retention is not up to the parent. It's actually up to our teacher and a team of individuals. Um, we have a team with our resource, our M T S S coordinator, um, our assistant principal, myself. Um, we get a big team of people together and to retain your students is actually up to our team here at school. In all of the years we've been open, we've only retained, I think, maybe one or two students. Um, I realize that there's this anxiety of our kids aren't ready. And we are doing, I will tell you, with the growth that we're seeing, it's, it's actually better than what we've seen even in some years past right now. So whatever our students, and it may not seem like it when your kids are at home and they're learning and what's going on because you're so much more involved in their education because you've been doing a lot on your own at home and you've had to. But I will ensure to you that all of the skill level grouping and the work that we do as a school helps close that gap for your kids, those early interventions that we work on. We, um, work side by side with the students in small groups, um, doing differentiated instruction when they're, um, working in their centers and so forth. So our goal is to help partner with you to get your kids caught up. We have some creative ideas of things that our teachers are working towards, um, wanting to ensure that that recovery plan is still in place and working. But in terms of retention, it's not something that you can just choose. Um, we would have to work on side by side and it would have to be a pretty, we even go through this whole assessment piece to ensure that those kids need, um, that they can then be retained. So, um, let's kind of answer that question that it's, it's really, it's a big collective decision, not just a parent decision. That's all the questions? Okay. What other questions? Are there any other questions that our families have? If you want, we can also, um, we can turn on the option so that you can ask questions. Um, do you want to? Okay. 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 Um, any other questions that you guys have? Will parents in elementary still be able to come? Yes. So lunch duty, I love it. Because we have some families who are essential, um, workers or essential volunteers that are helping with lunchtime. Um, we, will parents in elementary still be able to come to lunch duty? Absolutely. We'll have to have another sign up for that because we always need help with lunch duty. Next year is this, as the COVID guidelines open some more, we're going to be able to have more on parents in the building volunteering and helping out and so forth. So I'm really excited to see how we can start to open that up even more. Okay. Any other questions, Catherine? Okay. So if you do have any other questions, I'm going to put back up our, um, you can email us directly.
I do get one more.
Oh, you have one more. Okay.
Let's see. Okay, COVID aside.
Hold on, sorry.
Go ahead. What are the long-term goals for extracurricular activities?
So long-term goals for extracurricular activities, um, I would need to know specifically if it's K through five. Uh, we, we will be opening back up again, some more of our clubs, um, extensions of more clubs. We want to get that garden club back, um, our chess club. We have land sharks that's available for kids. We've got, um, oh my gosh, there's tons of ideas that had been put out. There's a lot of clubs around our House of Yetis that we wanted to, we, that was sort of a long-term plan was to have some more clubs that were revolved around our houses. In terms of elective, I mean, sorry, um, extracurricular for middle school specifically, we really want to get back to our sports, being able to offer the different quarterly sports that we were, we started with after, on our second year. Um, I know Mr. Zalasko is still trying to get us into that, um, to the, uh, the league that happens with the different charter schools and in with the districts so that we can compete against some of those schools. Uh, we also have band and choir that, um, I know Mr. Ernest is definitely very passionate about doing some drama. Um, so, and then we have our yearbook and we've got our student council, actually student council will be definitely implemented more this next year in addition to our National Junior Honor Society. So we're, we've been looking at that or a beta club sort of philosophy with that. So we had to put everything on pause this year because we, um, are unable to do a lot of clubs unless they are virtual. And I know it's not as interactive. It's hard to have a basketball club when you're trying to play basketball virtually, but, or gardening. So we are waiting for some of those. We did just get some new, um, I got something actually from the health department today regarding extracurricular and some of the new changes that they had. and some of the new changes that they had with that, with the season coming up for the spring season. So I'm excited to see kind of what changes that will bring and what we can then open up to here at school.
Would you do a school dance for middle school?
So the good news is, I think we're actually going to try to pull off a middle school dance even this year, doing some kind of event for end of the year event. Because our middle school being smaller is a cohort in of itself, so those kids can interact with one another in an event like that. So we are looking at that, I've been working with my admin assistant and the middle school talking about what kind of end of the year events we can do even this year. And then in the previous, next year's, absolutely, we want to have sort of a seventh and eighth grade dance and doing something fun like that. Sky's the limit, we just need the access to do so. Okay, Stacy, if you still had a question, you can type that in the chat box. Looked like your hand was up and we were going to try to unmute you, but it wasn't unmuted. If you have any other questions, I got about three more minutes that will be here asking. And if you have other questions or comments or concerns, feel free to reach out to myself, Riceig. If it has to do with some health and safety items, both her and I serve on the Health and Safety Committee and we can bring your concerns to that task force. But in the meantime, I, I just truly want to thank each of you again for partnering with us and working through all of the growing pains of a pandemic and working through what we've had to work through. And if you have any questions for any of our teachers, a grade level specific about what's going on in a grade level, you know, we've got a couple of minutes that you can ask some grade level questions. Okay, go ahead, Catherine.
So Stacy asked, when our kids return, will there be an assessment to see where they are at? We don't want our student to fall behind, will that be addressed with skill level grouping?
So Stacy, that's actually a really great question because we do that benchmark test every, we do it beginning, middle and end of the year. So the same assessment that your student is doing now, we have a, we now have baseline data again, because we had to kind of work with baseline data new for this year. And so we have fall, we now know middle and we saw the growth that happened with that. And then we'll go from middle to end of the year and then the students will take the same thing again in next fall. So we do have a, what's called a formative benchmark test that we look at and then our teachers can actually dive in to all the different standards that still need to be closed. And that's what we work on in those skill level groups. We also have goal forms that the students fill out with specific goals around which standards that they need to learn. And so that will be continuing because we'll be able to say, okay, here's where our kids were in the fall, here's where they're at at the end of the year. We're looking at some summer activities and things that our kids can still participate in the summer, giving some information to our parents on, here's some things that you can do through the summer, maybe it's through Google Classroom, maybe it's through continued work with I X L or some other progress monitoring type intervention software that you can continue with your students and we'll have some. We've talked about last summer, if you recall, we did do a math I X L reward and if students did a certain number of assignments in I X L, they got some rewards. We're looking at doing something specific with that. Summer school's sort of up in the air right now, our staff's a little burnt out and I'm not sure how many takers I'll have on summer school. But we are looking at alternative ways that we can still provide some summer instruction with tutoring, some creative tutoring services. So then in the beginning of the year, Stacy, we will have another idea of, okay, here's where they were in the fall this year to the fall of this next year. So we can see how that growth happened and what still needs to be closed. So all of that happens in all of our work that we do, even on those Wednesday early release days. We look at that data and our teachers look at that data to see how kids are improving. So that happens all the time regardless of us being in a pandemic or not. And I believe that's why we've seen so much growth from our fall to winter. Okay, and will summer content be available to virtual students? Absolutely, so any of our students who were doing e-learning, if they are planning on coming back to in-person this next year, that would still be available for our virtual students as well. Okay. Alright, well, thank you, everyone, we appreciate your time. Don't forget to go, as another shameless plug for Panda Express, I'm not a huge Panda Express lover, but I will find some orange chicken that I can eat tonight. But please order online and enjoy a night of just not having to cook maybe. And we'll see your kiddos tomorrow and please let us know if there's anything else that we can do to support our families and we sure appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you again for all of your volunteer time that you've given to our kids this year. Bye, everybody.